Welcome to the Mountain City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 24th. It's six o'clock in Mountain City Council chambers. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
There is a resolution in front of you to be added to the consent agenda, which will be item D. That was a recommendation that came from the Docs Commission meeting on Thursday, so it was just past the council deadline, but we're trying to get it in for the season here.
Okay. So the resolution we have will be D on the council agenda, or sorry, consent agenda. Okay, so I got that amendment. Can I get approval or a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of adding item D.
Okay, I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, and then we got the consent agenda. We only have a couple things: approval, payment of claims, we got the minutes from the regular meeting on the workshop, and the pay request for the 2024 crack ceiling project, and then, of course, what we just put on there, which is resolution approving the 2024 Waterside Commons riprap work.
Does anybody want to talk about any of those?
I don't need to talk about any of them in particular, but if there's any questions on D, I'm on the Docs Commission, and it was just kind of like a much smaller version of the Brighton Commons project earlier this year.
Okay.
So it's, you know, Docs fund funded.
Is this what we talked about earlier, where all the erosion has happened?
Yes, where the riprap is like gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve it?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. And second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember McInerney?
Aye.
Councilmember Costellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. All right, all that passes. Thanks. Okay, number five, we got comments and suggestions from anyone that their topic is not on the agenda? Okay, not hearing anybody. And before we go to planning, I'm going to have Orno police come up real fast and give us an update on the end. Welcome.
Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me. So this report I ran was between August 27th and September 23rd. So far, we've had about 108 calls of service to the Mountain area. Nothing has been significant. Everything seems to be toned down with school starting. We still continue to have a few things. One thing I noticed is now we're up to, within that month, we're up to about 12 DWIs in the area. That being said, though, that is also our department has been proactively participating in TZD, state grant, to put extra squads out on the road sides to specifically enforce traffic. So that's, could be most of it too, because the guys have been very busy with that. I actually have one out right now, and it's running just straight traffic. So that could be some of it, but it is that time of year, too, that we could see some jumps like this. Then we've also, like I noticed, do a couple liquor law violations. That'd be two open bottles in a vehicle, and then one of age consumption. So those are just some things that stuck out to me that I noticed was kind of trending. School being back in session, everyone seems to be adjusting well. SRO has reported to me that there's no unusual activity in OLL or Shirley Hills or Grandview. She says she's pretty much busy right now with teaching day classes, and that's consuming a lot of her time. So that's a good thing to see. One thing she did point out to me, we've already had our first stop arm violation for the year. She's investigated. So that being so, we have, we have one officer at least a shift during the day during school bus hours that gets into a vehicle on their own doing, unmarked, and follows buses around just to make sure people stay in compliance with that, because that is a major safety issue that we do not tolerate, and we handle them pretty quickly and as efficiently as we possibly can. Or, just a heads up, that Orno and Medina area, we've been hit with a couple burglaries in the last few weeks. The Crime Collaborative in the area, so it's mostly made up of investigators in our area, and CISA, Crime Analysis Group, that tend to trend these things. They know the group, they've dealt with the group, they don't know if it's the same group or if they're just using their tactics, but we have up patrols during the day. Orno has been out very diligently in the neighborhoods, patrolling, stopping cars that don't belong in the area when they can, or suspicious activities with solicitors, and people just walking door to door. They've been following up, so we make sure we're watching the area as best we can. And that being said, we have to make sure our citizens are using their alarm systems that they have, and they're locking up their houses, so. Other than that, there ain't much. Again, I think I brought up last time, oh, Surfside and Centerview Beach, everything seems to be leveling out. We've had one written warning. One of the officers on the overnight caught one person trying to bow hunt or bowfish from the shore.
Oh, wow.
For carp. So they just can't do that after hours, and they chased him out, but nothing major from that. As I was saying, the last council, I told you guys about our SWAT team. Again, this week, Saturday, our, me and the SWAT team will be heading to Camp Brookley for our three-day MTOA conference. All of us are looking forward to be educational, competitive, and very challenging, so that's what we got going on so far in our area.
All right. Does Council have any questions for you?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, number six, we got planning commission recommendations. We got Rita coming up.
Yes. All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I'm Rita Trapp, the city's planning consultant. You can go to the next slide. I'll probably go through this. There, thanks. The request before you this evening is major subdivision and a conditional use permit for the properties located at 242420 Commerce Boulevard to develop the Lake Minnetonka flats. As you recall, you did see an introduction to this project, and so this is the applicant's formal application to try and create the four townhomes per building, so 12 townhomes total, or townhomes, flats total. They're in the design of a townhome, as you can see from the illustration. Their units are spread across three buildings. Each are two stories with an underground parking option because of the way that the slope is for the site back to the lake. And there is a proposed shared HOA dock arrangement with a nearby property, and that is separate. It's part of our conversation, but the approvals will actually be coming from other agencies, and so we do have a condition that acknowledges that. I'll talk a little bit about that, but that is off our purview, and so it's something that we're aware of, and there are some changes that have occurred since the planning commission meeting as a result of what's happening off in the lake, or Lost Lake area, wetland slash lake area, that we'll all acknowledge, but generally, the project onshore is mostly the same as what the planning commission saw. The location, the properties are located on the eastern side of Commerce Boulevard. They, it is next to Lost Lake, and the property itself does touch the Lost Lake Channel, which is why this property, in contrast to some other properties in the Lost Lake area, would have the ability to have some docks and some slips, and that's why it is considered, because it does have shoreline and it does touch all the way up to the Channel. The applicant is proposing to develop this site in total at 7.9 acres, however, the wetland consumes a lot of that area. If we look at the existing conditions, there is just an accessory garage on the 2400 parcel, and the rest of it is vacant. This was a home in the past, but that has, is no longer there. The garage is what remains. As I said, the request is for a major subdivision and preliminary plat, as well as a conditional use permit. This is in the Shoreland Plan, Shoreland Overlay District. It is also in the mixed-use Commerce District. Because of that, it does require a conditional use permit for any new development to occur. So the fact that we have a planned unit development, conditional use permit is our tool to do that. That is a requirement. It is not because they're specifically asking for something that's causing it, it's a requirement of the city so that we can establish setbacks and other elements as part of the project. Just briefly on our guidance for the city, it is guided mixed use. The goals of the mixed-use district is to support a combination of different types of uses: commercial, residential, public, and civic. The density goal for this area, or all of our mixed-use areas, is eight to 15 units an acre. The proposed development is at 9.2 units per acre. If you remember, I talked about the site being 7.9 acres in size. Once you take out the land below the ordinary high water level, the wetlands, the site really is only 1.3 acres in size. So that's how you get to that density for that subject site. Again, just a brief, oh, the zoning, sorry, the next slide. It is mixed-use corridor, and as such, does require a planned unit development for any new development. Again, just another picture, it is four units per building, each are two to three bedrooms. They are flat, so it's designed to look like townhomes from the street, but really, each individual unit is one floor, one floor, single level living. And you can see the lake perspective. I'll talk a little bit on the next slide about parking. Parking is private, below grade, in garages, and there is a drive aisle. Oh, go back, just because it's a little confusing. On this side elevation, you can see this is an opening into the garage area. This is open, and you can drive between that, and then these are each individual private garages. There's also an opening in each of the buildings, kind of in the center area, so there aren't garage doors there. My understanding from the planning commission conversation is that those are open, but they will have doors in front of each of their individual, and then there is an elevator and staircase. And so the north building, you have to drive through the middle building to get to the north building. It is a very tight site. Yes?
Oh, sorry. So just the question was like, there's the common entrance, and then it's because each unit is on one floor, so they have a shared entry, right?
Yes, they have a shared entry. Can we go back one slide?
Just to clear.
They have a shared entry.
Cool.
And then, in that entry, there's an area for mail, and then there's the elevator, and then the staircase, and then they can also up and down, and then they'll be able to access the garage level. And, but, and this works, no, that's fine, since I have the same picture on both. Each unit has their own outside area as well, that they can use, kind of a deck area, and those are shown in the architectural plans.
So to clarify, I mean, it's like each unit has its own, like, lake or lost lake-facing deck, and then street frontage, too?
Correct.
They both go all the way?
Yes, and it's just that these are looking, and there's a doorway for the lower units that they can access. So that's where it looks like a townhouse, but that's really an extra entrance and exit for those lower units, because this is the primary entrance into the building. So it is a very unique design, and it was something that the applicants really worked on with the architects because of the fact of it's a very narrow site, as I'll talk about in a second, of the setbacks and how the setbacks all work. This was a way, because if you have the individual townhouse with the need for multi-level living, and then the access and really the marketplace would prefer the single level living, this was their approach to try and address both of those needs that we have at the same time. All right. So the preliminary plat is actually fairly straightforward. They are combining the two existing lots into one parcel. They are proposing that after the development or after the preliminary plat and the building is constructed, they will actually use a common interest, or a CIC, Common Interest Community plat. That allows you to create the individual for-sale units, because those are going to be for-sale units. So similarly, that's what we have in Mountain Marketplace. It's just a business application where each individual unit is sold, and there will be an HOA for the remainder of the site. So at this point, because of it being the way, the nature of the project, we're just looking at a simple preliminary plat that just creates a lot, but then those things will come subsequent, and because we're involved in this process, when the CIC would come through, staff would be able to sign off that the CIC plat is acceptable, because it matches what we're proposing. Site plan changes, I do want to note a few. I'm going to kind of walk through the site, and then also talk about some of the changes. The buildings themselves are generally in the same location. From the planning commission meeting, that has not changed. This is the entrance off of Commerce. What has changed is the arrangement of the docks and how the docks enter into the site. It used to be that they came in on the north end, and then there was another piece down here, and there was an accessory structure. Those have been removed, and that's part of the discussion that's happened separately from the city with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District. So those are the changes. Otherwise, staff feels like this is still substantially in conformance with what the planning commission saw, because what we're really talking about, most of the changes are related to on-the-lake or on-the-wetland type of elements instead of on-the-land. There are some other changes that I'll talk about that address the planning commission comments about parking and landscaping, but this is the one change that's caused by outside conversations to us. So I just wanted to note that as we move through the process. One thing that is confusing, a little bit different about this site, is a very narrow site. I think you can all see that. This, there's a, there's a yellow line, which I can pick up, it's probably pretty hard. That is the 50-foot ordinary high water level setback. You can see that if they were required to meet that setback, it'd be very difficult to do any development of the site, because it really doesn't leave room. The green area is the shore impact zone. There is a requirement through the use of the PUD that they preserve a majority of that shore impact zone. As you can see, even this red area, which will be impacted, that's really about the construction limits. They're actually not talking about constructing any buildings. It's just they will have to impact that area. They are going to restore it back to native, but this is one of the diagrams and part of our importance when we talk about the Shoreland Overlay District. So I wanted to just highlight that, because that's hard to see on the diagrams, especially if you're working off of black and white. So we can move forward. Other site plan elements. Again, I talked about the north building, middle building, south building. This is the entrance, so this is where you'll drive through to reach the north building. Setbacks in our PUD district, we do have a requirement that buildings should be, for the front, should be between 15 and 25 feet. That's generally to try and make sure that we don't have garages necessarily facing the front when we're talking about Commerce in our mixed-use district. It's trying to create some kind of presence and place. They tried to do that, but as you can see, it really varies between each of the buildings about how far they are set back. Part of that is part of the curve of the road and how this property line addresses the road, and so the north building ends up being farther back. The south building, because of topography, you can see there's a lot of topography. These are staircases and access ramps, and those all have to be outside of the county right-of-way, so they needed to kind of fit all of that elements in. So the buildings are not quite meeting that, but we are, through the PUD process, able to establish the setbacks at the points that we feel are appropriate. Relative to side yards, generally, they are at 10 feet, which is similar to many of our districts in the community. And then the shoreline setback, you can see, again, varies. Our goal as staff, recognizing when we have these tight situations, is to have them at least 25 feet back, which is kind of that shore impact area that we want to make sure that we're protecting. So they're, they're similar to some of the other cases that we've seen in order to address a unique site and a tight property that's not of their making. Moving on. Just, you can see a little bit about how the layout of the sites, of the individual units are. So this is just the main level. You can see that entrance area that we talked about in blue, elevator, staircase, kind of a mail, package drop-off area. The red is one of the units, and the green is the second unit, and then it's mirrored on the second floor. So I think that's helpful to just kind of illustrate what it looks like and how it'll be divided up. This is that area that you could see, that's an open deck area that's facing off to Lost Lake. City code requires that you have to have at least 760 square feet for a two-bedroom and 880 square feet. These are well above that, so I just noted it. It's more about explaining kind of how the flats are going to look that I wanted to show you. Moving on to architectural elements, we do have code standards in the mixed-use Commerce District. I didn't identify all of them. Generally, they are achieving the goals that we have for the architectural. We did note in our staff packet that they do, we do want to make sure that there's pedestrian entry. It's very hard to see it, but at the planning commission, we did clarify that particularly this, the main entrance of the building, will have something that protects you if you're waiting to open the door. So that's something that has been addressed. All buildings will meet the 35-feet requirement. I do note that this is a sloping site. It will be measured in the average gray between the front, the Commerce-facing side, and the lake-facing side, so an individual side will be taller than 35 feet, but on average between the two, they will meet just under the 35-foot threshold that we have. And that's our typical approach for building height. And then the last element is the regulatory flood protection elevation. 933 is required. 937 is what is proposed. The flood elevation does factor into some of our challenges on maneuverability on the site. I know there was an interest at the planning commission for visitor parking, and the applicant had looked at that, putting it behind the building, but the problem is then we end up with having it be underneath what we need to require for flood plain. So those are some of the challenges of the site, is that we have all of these overlapping requirements, and it's hard to find the places to put certain elements. Site suitability, I don't think we've seen a project in a while that was required to go through Shoreland tiering, so I'll do my best, but please ask me again if you want more explanation. I'm going to do the very high level. In order to have a Shoreland planned unit development, it is required by state rules and our own Shoreland regulations that an applicant go through and identify how many units are allowed for density purposes within each one of the tiers. Tiers are set based on the type of lake that you are on. It is a specific distance, so 200 feet generally for a general development lake, and you use the total acres of your site divided by 10,000 square feet, which is our minimum lot size for our R1 single-family district. If you do that, that means that you would have, that what would be the allowed density would be five units, which doesn't really make sense and doesn't, would not achieve the density goals that we have in the comprehensive plan for this district. So the 12 units is appropriate. This is very common, almost all of our projects in downtown or any of our mixed-use districts. Go through the Shoreland tiering analysis. We recognize that that doesn't work, because that's basically saying that you can only do single-family residential along this corridor, which has not been the guidance we've determined for the comprehensive plan, and so we are using the planned unit development to vary from that standard. And then the open space, the open space, because it is a Shoreland planned unit development, that is a requirement that they need to meet a certain threshold. They currently, the last numbers we have are at 68.2%. That number has increased since what we saw with the planning commission because of the changes relative to the dock, where it's placed, the removal of the small accessory structure, so that's changed slightly, but that is in keeping with what the requirements are. I did want to make, I knew there was one other comment I thought about Shoreland tiering I wanted to make. If you recall, I said 200 feet for the first tier. This depth of this lot is nowhere near 200 feet deep. So again, this property is also affected by the fact that it's not very deep, it's not very big, and so that affects what's really reasonable in terms of the Shoreland tiering calculations. Parking, I've talked a little bit about parking along the way, but it just, again, just in case orientation purposes, the driveway to Commerce, there was currently one access. They are proposing to retain just one access. You will come in the driveway and either go inside the south building, into the middle building, through to the north building. There is a small temporary parking area located here. There is topography, so there are steps located along the side of the south building to kind of maneuver your way down. The visitor parking was an issue that was brought up and discussed extensively at the planning commission. I think that was the element that the planning commission was the most concerned about, and so the applicant, since the planning commission meeting, has met with the Gillespie Center, and we did include a letter that we had received from the applicant indicating that the Gillespie Center is willing to enter into an arrangement with them to provide visitor parking. The number is not necessarily established by code. Our code requires just two parking spaces per unit, so they have met the code requirements, but I think it's really felt strongly that visitor parking needs to be accounted for because winter parking restrictions mean you can't park on the street overnight. So people could park on the street most of the time, but if we are looking at overnight parking during those winter months, you wouldn't have any opportunities on-site. And so staff had suggested six being a reasonable number. That's our suggestion of where visitor parking would be. That's kind of like two spaces per building, and that would be something that we have added a condition for. The condition generally talks about them providing some type of visitor parking, either through an arrangement such as this, or if they were ever able to acquire an adjacent parcel to construct parking, then that would be sufficient, but they need to have something recordable that can be in perpetuity for parking. And by perpetuity, I mean something that exists. So it might be that the shared arrangement with the Gillespie is what they need for now, and if they ever were able to acquire anything surrounding, then that could sunset, and we would have another mechanism to provide visitor parking. So that's what the applicant has tried to do in response to the planning commission The landscaping plan, we did have our landscape architect review this. We did make some comments. In blue, I've kind of noted where they made changes. The city code does have a diversity requirement that requires a certain number of trees to be either deciduous or coniferous. They've made that adjustment in the updated plan, so generally, it seems reasonable. The only concern that we had, and we may have further conversations with the applicant, is about how do we maintain these with the slopes and the different retaining walls? How do we actually maintain? So we might make some slight changes. Generally, they've achieved the intent of the code. It's just a matter of making sure it's reasonable and that the HOA will be able to maintain it into the future. The wetlands, there was a notice of decision that was released recently, and so that is what solidifies where the wetland is. So this is the wetland delineation line. The wetland is 6.5 acres in size, though it does extend off of the property. It is a public waters wetland, and the project really falls under the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. The one note is that the Watershed District has their own buffer requirements, so the applicant needed to deal with our shore impact zone, our open space requirements, and Minnehaha Creek's buffer, and so they've tried to kind of work all of the city and Minnehaha Creek regulations together in designing the site. Stormwater, they're proposing 45%. That is something that would meet our code requirements, and they are working with MCWD as is typical. There are, they are actively working, I know they had resubmitted plans, updated plans similar to what you have seen, and they are actively on their meeting schedule to be reviewed as well. Staff consultant agency review, we didn't include in your packet the detailed information that had been included for the planning commission. Partly, that's because the applicant had worked to address staff comments, Hennepin County comments, and so those, a lot of those comments have been addressed. There's going to still be technical elements that all agencies work on, but generally, they are making strides to address any of our comments. So we have all the responses, all the detailed responses, and we'll continue to work with the applicant. So there's not really anything particularly notable about all the agency and staff comments. There was the comment about the DNR, from the DNR related to the docking system, but that is part of the work that they have been doing with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and Lake Minnetonka Conservation District to hopefully address the comments from the DNR about movement in the wetland. And again, that's somewhat separate. It affects our approval process, but it is a separate approval that they would need to be granted. I should also note that we executed a 60-day extension just for the conditional use permit. Subdivisions are 120 days, land use applications are 60, to kind of match everything together, just to give us a little time to get all potential actions that you have. We just executed that in the last week. Public hearing notice was distributed as following our standard practice. No comments have been received, either in preparation of the packet or before this evening, but you are holding a public hearing this evening, so there may be public comments that we have yet to hear and receive. As I've mentioned a couple of times, the planning commission did review this at their September 3rd meeting. Areas of discussion, the overnight guest parking, which we've discussed. Snow removal was kind of part of the parking discussion, and then mail and package delivery. Otherwise, the planning commission was fairly favorable to the application, and so was, they ultimately recommended approval, but asked the applicant to make more strides relative to visitor parking. So with that, we do ask that you hold the public hearings this evening. It's both major subdivision preliminary plat and conditional use permit. We did purveyor resolutions for your consideration, because there was staff and planning commission recommendation of approval. However, you are always able this evening to not move forward with those resolutions and take other action, which might be tabling it if you feel like more information is needed, or denying it with identifying the findings of fact. With that, I can answer any other questions that you may have?
Does Council have any questions for Rita?
No, I read, like, the planning commission, you know, like, they were favorable of it in the visitor parking thing. I mean, it's important to note that without it, the parking still meets code.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. No, I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I mean, is this when we're supposed to talk?
This is if you have questions for me.
Oh, I don't have any questions.
And then the mayor will direct who next gets to present and talk.
Right. Thanks. All right, so I'm
All right, so I'm gonna open the public meeting. If anybody wants to come up and talk about it. All right, not hearing anybody, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. And do you guys wanna talk about anything? Do you wanna hear from the applicant at all, or?
I mean, if the applicant has anything that they would really like to add. But I mean, I think the project looks great.
Yeah, I agree.
Happy they chose that site in Mound, so I mean, I think it looks awesome.
Yeah, I.
But if they want a chance to talk, I mean, by all means.
I agree. I like, love the project. They, glad that you guys are spending time and energy and resources in our town to do this, so.
Councilor McEnany?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna stay consistent. I love the project. I think you've worked really, really hard with both Sarah and Rita to maximize this. You know, it's a tough area to try to get everything everybody wants. But, I mean, I feel like you did go to efforts to find parking, but a lot of it was onsite parking, you know, for deliveries, for the guests, for emergency. And I, I don't know, I just feel like the Gillespie Center is two and a half blocks away. They could just as easily park in the free parking ramp. Not that Gillespie won't be free. You know, your concept's been really popular, except for the onsite parking. And I think I'd be a little bit more sympathetic, maybe is the right word, to the great problem had you not, in your initial presentation, had two parking spots, which at that point wasn't enough. And then you came to the Planning Commission, and there were no more parking spots. So I just don't feel that one parking spot at the end of that shared driveway is enough. You know, for me, this kind of falls under the category of if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And I'm just still really uncomfortable with one spot at the end of the driveway. And I understand that you've worked hard. I'm trying to understand what, where all of a sudden all these steps and everything came from.
So I'll go ahead.
Carl Brunk, 401 Second Street.
Before you go on, I want, I want you to clearly understand how much I love the project. I just feel that, I just wanna avoid unintended consequences going forward with parking.
Sure. Again, Carl Brunk, co-developer of the project, 401 Second Street, Excelsior Street, Mayor, members of the council. This is a very unique and challenging site, as Rita said. And with us from the project team, the architects and one of the engineers here, who could perhaps speak to the challenges of the project sloping. The original design intent, we came to in June with, had a, it turns out, a very steep driveway, steep to the point of being dangerous, we feel like, for people to wanna go down a, I forgot what it was, 20% slope. And we wanted to adjust that slope to something that feels less dangerous to someone as a resident driving down. And there was, there's things that had to change because of that, changing the slope. And this was one of the consequences of that, of a unique challenged site. So we tried to make the best of the courtyard area that's really created kind of an auto court that as you drive down at a lower slope, to feel safe as a resident driving down there, and have enough space for deliveries and for temporary guest parking. There is street parking available most hours, just not, you know, overnights and winter times. We have an arrangement with the Gillespie Center. We're satisfying city code for parking. We are intending to try to acquire more properties up, if we could, up and down Commerce, that perhaps where it could be some visitor parking. But with this site, the Falmouth site, we think we've maximized what we can do with the constraints we have. It's just a really tricky site. And it's not just with the city, it's as you heard with the Watershed District and their buffer requirements, and the DNR, and the LMCD. There's just a lot of jurisdictions on this site, which has been tricky to work, you know, on a design that satisfies all the requirements that way. So I appreciate the concern in that way.
How common is overnight parking for, say condos or flats, or?
Well, there's certainly, you know, Lost Lake Villas is really the model for this project in some ways. It's been a well-received project. And I don't have the exact counts. We could find out, you know, how many people stay overnight there in an average night or during the year. But, yeah, there are, there will be visitors, but will it be six stalls? I don't think so, at any given time that there are people overnight, there are six stalls being used. And I think it depends on the time of the year. Summer parking, again, is available out here on the street, or even closer by than the Gillespie Center. But the Gillespie Center is there as an option for people, with what we're working towards with them right now, with an arrangement.
Are you able to pull up the parking, the map where it shows the parking under the?
This one here?
Yeah. So that, that does show two vehicles, right?
Yeah, two vehicles per private garage.
Per flat. Okay. So hypothetically, if there's only one person, that their visitor could park in their second stall.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, correct. That, these are, this originally started as, I think Rita said, as a townhome design, based on the city's vision for more townhomes. And we had initially had a traditional townhome design with garage back and driveway out back, because of the slopes.
Right.
And because of the buffer requirements, we pushed the driveway underneath the building, like this, to accommodate the buffer requirements and have this common, which would be owned by the HOA, common driveway, which is wide. I mean, it's wide enough for large vehicles to turn in and out of there. But it is true that if someone, not every unit's gonna have two vehicles there at all times. So it is a possibility that if there's a second vehicle, it could be parked as a visitor in the garage.
Right. So this is a completely different comment, I guess. But, so my parents live in a condo in Bloomington. And I have to go, same, similar, I go down, you know, into their area. They only have one garage that they, or sorry, parking spot that they own. The rest of it, you know, is visitor. I don't know if you can stay overnight, though. But I've never in 18 years, I think, I mean, I've never stayed overnight. But I do know I can park on the street, you know, in front of their condos, so. I totally, I kinda echo Councilmember McEnany. I did see that in the original plan, and I was kind of bummed not to see it. But I do think that, you know, each unit has two stalls, plus you could park on the street. Plus, I mean, right around the corner, there's more parking. Gillespie, you got an agreement with them, that's more parking, you know, if they do overnight or not. Plus, a lot of these people aren't gonna know each other. If there is an open stall, hey, my friend's coming over for a couple of days, can they park in your stall? So I guess I'm kind of comfortable with it. But McEnany, do you have any other questions, or? Okay. Anything else you wanna say or anything before we talk?
No, it's been, this has been almost a year process, working closely with the city and other jurisdictions. We're really pleased with the outcome of what we're at right now, and getting started in this. It's an exciting, you know, way to revitalize Commerce, you know, Boulevard on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, does council wanna talk about this anymore? Any other questions or thoughts, or?
I don't think so. I feel like I'll probably just repeat myself. I mean, Councilmember McEnany's point that, like, Gillespie is a little farther away, but it is like a formal agreement. We both know that there's closer parking nearby. So I'm not too worried about it. And aside from that, that it does meet code without additional parking. I think it'll be, I think it'll be good.
Okay. Councilor McEnany?
Well, again, I'm uncomfortable without any onsite parking, except for that one stall. I know that if you could purchase, you know, the property next door, that would be fantastic for all of us. You more so than the rest of us. And that would solve all sorts of problems, but that's a lot of what if, what ifs for me.
All right. So on page 2272, is that the right?
Yeah, we have two.
Is this, is that what you're showing me? Okay. Okay. Does someone wanna make a resolution for that?
Sure. I would like to make a resolution approving major subdivision preliminary plat of Lake Minnetonka Plats for property located at 2,400 to 2,420 Commerce Boulevard.
Okay. Got a motion, can I get a second? I'll second it. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So that passes. And then number 2276. We got, that one, do you wanna make that one?
Sure. I'll make a resolution approving conditional use permit for Shoreland Plan Unit Development for Lake Minnetonka Flats project for same property, 2,400 and 2,420 Commerce Boulevard.
All right. Got a motion, can I get a second? I'll second it. And any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
All right, so that passes. Is that it for that, then? Okay. All right, congrats, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number seven, we got award quote for 2024 sewer televising to pipe services.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Matt Baumann, city engineer with Bolton Mink. So annually, the city staff goes through and cleans sewer, city sewers. They do about a fifth of the town every year, and then have found that it's more cost-effective to get quotes, to do the televising, the inventory of the sewer lines, and then we can find defects and work on fixes. So this year, the two areas are kind of Shirley Hills, Shirley Hills area, part of that, and then part of the Highland Boulevard. That's what they were able to get into. So on September 10th, we requested quotes back from five contractors. We got four back. And pipe services was the low quote at $26,841.80. And they are out of Shakopee, and they actually did the work last year. They're reputable contractors. So we recommend awarding the quote for sewer televising to pipe services.
Okay. Does council have any questions for?
Nope.
All right. We have a resolution on page 2309. Okay, are we?
Ready to make a resolution?
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions? Okay, good.
I would like to make a resolution awarding contract for 2024 sewer televising project.
All right. You got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed? All right, that passes.
Thank you.
Number eight, Invoice Cloud iCloud for utility billing, online bill pay.
All right. Mayor and council, in front of you this evening is, I'll be presenting some information regarding an online platform called Invoice Cloud that would allow the city to offer utility customers additional services more than what we currently offer. Some of the added services would include online access to personalized accounts, so customers can sign up for their accounts, personal accounts. And then they would be able to get access to up to two years' worth of their personal utility account information. It would also be an online payment option. Expanded payment options would also be included, and that includes debit, credit, and other digital wallet methods. We currently do not offer those. It would also be an added communications platform. So they can sign up for not only automated messages for their utility billing, like their bills and payments, but this, they can opt in to other city communications as well, so we can push, you know. I would say we would keep it more towards utility billing, but, you know, again, that there's a water main leak, if there's, for doing work in the area, that's an option for us to push more messaging. And then the customers can also sign up for auto pay, flex pay options. So if, right now, we're billing quarterly. If somebody wants to do like a payment on a monthly basis, they can set that up to have automatic payments scheduled. And then, again, they have access to their account information, and so they can log in, and they can understand real-time what they owe remaining, or if they have a balance. I mean, if they have a credit. So a little bit of history, the city in Mound, we provide utility services to property owners throughout the city. We've been working with a company called Opus 21 since 2013. They do a lot of our, a lot of our billing calculations, mailing, customer service calls off-site. We do, do have some, we do some of it still at City Hall, but they're our main provider for utility billing. Again, right now, there's currently two options, receive a utility bill, and that's, the default is by paper. There's an opt-in for paperless, and that's sent by email. The city and Opus have continued to encourage residents to do e-billing, because it's cheaper. The city gets, if it's a paper bill, we get charged, I'll talk about that later, we get charged a higher amount because of paper and the cost of printing and postage. Currently, there are 15% of our accounts that are on paperless. Payment options for customers right now, they can do ACH signup out of their savings or checking, and that, through the city's signup auto pay function. So we have 25% of our accounts currently on this right now. The process to sign up, though, is a paper process. So it's a, somebody has to physically submit that information to City Hall on a paper form. And so, again, this option with, through iCloud, would allow us to, people to sign up automatically by creating their own account. And the other option is cash or check. So we do not currently accept credit card, debit card, or digital wallet options yet. So iCloud currently works with 72 other municipalities. I reached out to City of Chaska, and they said they've been very happy with iCloud. They've been working with them for a couple of years now. iCloud and Opus have worked together in other communities, and so they know how to integrate the system, their systems in with one another. So that, we think the process would, would go fairly quickly, since they're used to each other. Again, there are, with the increased service, again, that residents would have, there would be, we're estimating about an $18,000 increase in costs, and I'll go over those. Nonetheless, we do predict that there will be some efficiencies created in areas. Again, we would have customers that would have access to their account information. Currently, a lot of their customers have to call in if they lose their bill. We generally reprint or email. And then also, again, there would be expanded payment options. And we have, you know, we do receive several comments. I was at a conference, I received from a Mound resident, she said, when are you guys gonna get different payment options? So, so that, again, is something that we hear a lot. So in your packet, is a more detailed, is more detailed information on the fees associated with the program. So again, we would have fees associated with our access to their portal. Opus would continue to send paper bills. And then the change would be that iCloud would be sending our paperless bills. There's more detailed information. Again, the more people we can get up to do, sign up to do paperless, the better. It's, it costs, 'cause it costs less. So with that, there were some financial points that were discussed with the financial committee. So we needed to make some decisions. So currently, our auto pay, e-pay ACH payments, our residents are not charged for signing up for that. They would now be charged per transaction if they were still continuing to use that option. The option is $1.95 per transaction. And so the, upon view, the finance committee is recommending that the city pay for this fee to encourage customers to stay on automatic payment. But it would only be for accounts that are set up on auto pay. So reoccurring, similar to what they are now, but the reoccurring auto pay option. The one time in the moment payments would be required to pay that fee. Another financial decision, credit card, debit card, digital wallet payments. iCloud would charge a credit card fee at a rate of 3.25%, minimum of $2.95 per transaction. And then there would be a charge of $1 for phone payments. So the finance committee is recommending that those fees be passed on to the customer. So with that, staff is, staff and the finance committee feel that while there are some costs, there are added services, and it really gets us, I think, where we need to be as far as customer service. And so the city council is being asked to make a motion to approve moving ahead with a three-year contract with iCloud. That's within the packet, and that has been. That's within the packet, and that has been reviewed by staff and the city attorney.
Alright, does council have any questions for Maggie?
I have a couple. I think this is so long overdue. Thanks for doing all the research. It's just great. Is this going to be something that will move smoothly into our new website? Will there be any issues with that?
No, it shouldn't. I think right now, our current website redirects to the Opus website, and so I think it'll be a similar process where, you know, if, if customers need access to the utility billing, it'll be kind of a link. I think they said it would include like the mound website, it would be kind of like a page that would be like a secondary site for mound specifically, and so it would just be linked to our website and redirected.
But maybe just check with the website designers to make sure it can be incorporated without any issues being that they're kind of overlapping each other.
Okay, yes.
And then, I guess I have a little bit of a problem with mound taking over the one ninety-five per resident. I mean, I think most people that do auto pay are pretty used to paying that online setup fee. And it's minimal for the resident, but it's a lot of money for mound.
I thought it was passed on to the customer, wasn't it?
There's two, two of them. One-
I'm talking the one ninety-five.
Yeah.
So the one, I'll let you-
Well, just so you know, we, we struggle with that as well. And I'm probably good either way, to be honest. The thought was that they're not paying it now, so how do you get people to adopt it, move it over? You only have a choice, they're still gonna pay their bill. But they're not paying it now, do we want to make it kind of a similar event? If we don't, then it's, was it two bucks a month, times? Or no, two bucks a-
It'd be two bucks a quarter.
Quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not that much money either way.
Well, it's a lot of money for mound. It's not a lot of money for an individual.
But we're, are we already paying something like that now, for them currently? Or just we don't pay, we don't-
We don't, we don't. So everybody that would, that's currently on ACH, who doesn't get charged a fee, would start getting charged that fee.
Okay.
And the thought, the reason why I said I could go either way on it is because if it is, was that eight bucks then a year? Is that right? Difference? We did a mock setup on this, and the guy texted me, he's like, "Hey, pay your bill," you know, just how like every other place does it.
Right.
And it actually looks really nice, it's very slick. They, like you said, with the website, they tie it into the website, so they, it's like you go to citymount.com, you know, pay your water bill. Boom, and it flows right through, it's-
No, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure with our new website being designed currently, that everything would merge together nicely.
Their presentation was good, it wasn't clunky, or like, like it looked, I don't know, it looked like it was part of the website almost.
When did you have a presentation? Is that something we can all see?
It was at the finance committee meeting, but yeah, I mean-
I think it was recorded, so we can, I can ask for the recording.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I think it's, I love it. I mean, it's long overdue, I'm just, I am against taking on the one ninety-five per customer. That's, is that the seventeen five oh nine?
Yep.
That we would end up paying for customers?
That's our estimate, yeah, based on-
Your estimate?
What page is that on?
Twenty-three fourteen.
Is it this?
It's on page twenty-three fourteen.
Oh.
The middle, the projected-
And if they a hundred, if it's a hundred percent adopted, then we would have to pay thirty-one?
Yep, yep.
Oh.
About thirty-two, yep.
Well, then I'm with you.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, I can go that way.
Okay.
I really just can't imagine residents having a big issue with a dollar ninety-five, especially considering how gigantic they already feel about our-
I have a major issue with a dollar ninety-five.
You do?
Yeah. I'll pay a check, I will not, correct, no, no three point two five, no dollar ninety-five.
Well, it's a one-time, it's a one-time.
I don't care. I don't care.
Well, so the-
I'm sorry you didn't ask, I got it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay.
So the debate is, like you said, I think I agree that seventeen to thirty-one grand, is that something that the whole city should be paying just because people do ACH, and I think you're probably right on that.
I mean, check paying will be still available.
It'll still be available, and the one ninety-five is if you opt in to do, to do it, so I mean, you would have to-
I'm speaking to the lady that-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, would have an issue to one ninety-five, which I respect that, but you will still have the option to write a check.
So what you get for the eight bucks a year, whatever, is a way better way to, well, a way to actually access your stuff. And if you think about the time and energy, I mean, Noah can attest to this too, I'm sure, that, you know, the amount of calls, I mean, I don't know, you could probably send them a link, say, "Hey, go check your bill." You know, here, I'll send you a text message. It's pretty intuitive, but then, the other thing that I liked about it too, is that because it's gonna integrate with our new site, all the emails and the text messages and stuff that we're gonna collect, right? Then we can kind of tie those into it, because I remember, I think, I'm pretty sure I asked them, is there a way to pull that data in our new website? And, you know, we probably gotta talk with you about, you know, the legality of it, but you're like, yeah, it's, I mean, they're signing up to your system.
Well, that's, that's part of the beauty of this, is harvesting everybody's emails, which we've talked about for two years.
Right, right.
So it's beautiful. I love it. I just think we really need to be conscientious about being as generous as we would be to foot the one ninety-five per resident. Especially considering how much money we owe.
Yeah, I would agree with that too. I mean, I, maybe I'm weird, but like, I know that I can sign up for the one ninety-five, like, it's an option, but you don't have to.
You don't have to.
And like, I still usually have something that I want to go bug Kevin about, like, I bring my check in, you know? So maybe I won't pay that one ninety-five, or, you know, you can change your mind later, you know?
So you can still write a check to Kevin?
You can still bring your, you can still bring your bill in.
Bring it.
You know, or mail it, or do whatever, but if you want to sign up later, you can too, or, you know, so yeah, it's voluntary.
Okay. So I think we're on the same page.
Yeah. I think so.
I mean, just the service we're going to be offering going forward is so much more full nature than what we have been in the past. For those that don't want to pay the one-time fee until they're ready, or maybe they never will be, you'll still have the option to check. So I agree, we're all, it sounds like on the same page.
Okay, so do we have a resolution on this, or no?
There's instructions.
It would just be a motion to approve the agreement, but it would have, it would, the motion would have to include the change to, yeah, for that fee.
Okay. Does someone want to make that?
I can do that, and thank you for, like council member Matt, and he said, for putting in the work and research to keeping us caught up technology-wise. I would like to make a motion to move forward with the invoice, invoice cloud iCloud utility billing on, online bill pay agreement for a three-year contract.
With the residents, with not paying the-
Oh, with, with residents having the option to opt in for the one ninety-five.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any other discussion? I just have one thing, this'll start Jan. one? Or we're shooting for it?
Yeah, our goal is to get it going there, get it signed this week, and then get everything starting as soon as possible.
Will it be a rollout per quarter, as in like, every resident pays, they're on like a-
Yeah, it is staggered, so yeah, the company is gonna help us with marketing and getting the information out. But yeah, we're, our goal is to have it live by January first.
And just, we should put that in the newsletter, and of course, online, obviously.
Okay.
For this next one, before they, well, they're not gonna get it by January, are they?
We still have a newsletter in October.
It goes out February.
It goes out, this one will go out November.
Okay, good, perfect, okay. Okay, so I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Alright, that passes. Thank you, Maggie.
Thanks, Maggie, and Noah, whoever all has worked on this. It'll be very exciting.
Okay, then we got Deputy City Manager Maggie requesting discussion on action on the preliminary budget and levy. So age Gillespie funding request. And I'll maybe, can I just go on that a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. So we got a, is that in there, the packet?
Yep.
We got a kind of updated request from Rhonda Ellison, who's the director at Gillespie. And as you can see in here, the proposal is to request twelve thousand a year. I guess if you guys had a chance to look at that, that's kind of the recommendation. I did see in the newspaper the other day that she was in front of Orno, or someone was in front of Orno, and they pay nine, and that she was looking to have them pay twelve. I don't know what, you know, what they did with it, but that's, I think that's the only other city that is paying into Gillespie. The finance committee looked at it. I guess I'd kind of go with my original thought on it, that, you know, we're here to help with the newsletter and website and everything else, but wasn't really prepared to maybe, you know, fund, I mean, especially at the sixty.
Is it twelve thousand a year for?
Sixty.
How long?
I don't know if there's a set date here.
Yeah.
We had a ten-year agreement before. And that was sixty thousand a year. And then it went up to, the request was up to do seventy-five thousand, which is a per-resident number. And then we've got a kind of a re-request, you know, back down to twelve thousand, so. As the attorney, I think, was that your thing that you put in here? Or, sorry, Jesse, I think, put that in there, that technically, we're allowed to do this, we're allowed to-
Yeah, there's a, there's a express statutory authority that allows it.
Right. So... I don't know, I mean, I guess I could go either way, I just, I'd rather maybe look at this again next year, personally. So, I don't know what you feel.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say I think the same thing I did in the finance meeting. I think I'm saying the exact same thing, but, you know, like, I get the value and everything like that too. It's not utilized by all of our residents, and I just think with our current financial position, I'm not sure that that's something we should be entering a contract for. I didn't know about the previous, you know, sixty thousand dollars a year for ten years, that's like more than ten percent of our water deficit, like, you know, it just is something else that could add up, and I'm not sure that I can get on board with the contract, but what I had proposed at the finance committee meeting, and just to bring up here, is that I think we can offer them, you know, that much value in our resources, whether it's social media, the website, the newsletter, signage or advertising, or, you know, direct mail, staff time in some things, I mean, that gets to twelve thousand dollars pretty quickly in a roundabout way, but I don't, I don't think I'm in favor of entering a contract this year, but we can always look at it every year too.
Yep.
I'm really torn on this. You know, it's such a wonderful commodity that we have in mound, and yes, for ten years, we did foot the sixty thousand dollars, and that was a very happy day when that was over. And what if we had a year break from that, two years?
Couple of years, yeah.
I guess I'm, maybe negotiate and go back to five hundred dollars a month. I feel that it's, they're working really hard at trying to rebrand, trying to get more events, you know, weddings and mound, you know, it is in mound, and I think we've always been the main contributor to this, unfortunately. I don't know how actively Rhonda's working to get the other cities on board, but she seems like a go-getter to me. You know, I would propose maybe going back and saying, for this first year, we can do half. We can do five hundred a month. That would be six, six grand. And that, that way, we're contributing to the community.
Yeah, I kind of, I mean, I can get on board with that, and I think maybe, Mayor Holt said this before, but, or no, maybe you did too, it's like we weren't sure what exactly was being done with the money, and, you know, not that it's not being used correctly, but, you know, if we can use it for direct resources, like signage to help them promote the event space, or-
Well, I think they're really-
You know?
I think they're ready to do promotions, but they're dowry. If you've read all this, and I wish Sheri was here, because Sheri would be able to really give us highlights, because she's our liaison over at the Gillespie Center, and so she knows a lot more than probably the rest of us. I just hate to say no to such a valiant effort that Rhonda's making. She did a lot to decide to stay on board, to try to get them afloat, and to try to get them rebranded and redo slowly, you know, the inside, so people are actually proud to want to have an event in there. And I hate to say, you know, we can't do it. But I'd be comfortable with six thousand dollars, you know, look at the money we spend just on the Harrison Bay. It's not a lot, but you know-
For the barrels and, yeah.
I guess what I would say is, like, I'm totally comfortable with that, but then also continuing, you know, like, we can provide value in our resources still.
Right.
You know, so we can five hundred bucks a month. But give them space in the newsletter, you know, put stuff on the website and Facebook and-
And we've been promoting everything they have on Facebook, so. I want to give, I want to give Rhonda our backing, because I think she really has gone out on a limb to try to resuscitate the, you know, the Gillespie Center. And it is really a beautiful commodity for us, and for the, you know, for the residents that use it, a lot of the elderly use it. I like the fact that they're trying to get out there and bring in a youthful group with weddings and, you know, graduation parties and I'd like to know that we had a hand in that, as a council.
Yeah, I see value in it. I mean, my wife has a table at the holiday thing every year, you know?
Yep.
So I could have got on board with what you said.
You know, and then maybe going forward with you on the finance committee, you know, work towards trying to help Rhonda meet that goal, but, you know, this has been a tough year for us. She came to us at a tough time.
Yeah, she did, yeah.
During budgeting. So maybe she'd be, I'm sure she'd be happy with anything we decided to offer, to donate to their cause.
Okay, so it sounds like we're good with five hundred a month?
Yeah.
I would say-
And then review next year, right?
I would say let's do a one-year deal, so October to September.
So-
Can we start this before January? I mean, do we have enough in the budget to do that?
I would have to check, but we don't have to enter into a contract either. I mean, we can just commit a portion of our budget annually, and, I mean, it just depends on your comfortability.
My comfortability is the expiration date. And again, like we said before, we're kind of, I mean, sixty grand was a lot of money.
But that, but that was kind of a contract. We did sign on that.
Ten-year deal. So I'm saying, let's do a one-year, not that we're just gonna jump out next year, but let's, I want to be able to bring this back and then talk about it. And then maybe we do more, maybe we do less, maybe whatever.
I will add too, so some of the requests are some of the things that the three of you have been talking about, about how we can utilize our resources, but I was talking to Councilmember Pugh on Thursday about this, and she reminded me about some of these age-friendly grants that are coming in October. And we'll commit some time to that too, because this would be the perfect place to put that money, so I mean, there are, there are more opportunities, so I mean-
Yeah, that's great.
Starting out with something small, and then maybe we can find some money elsewhere, and, you know, do some, some sort of pass-through grant like we've done with other nonprofits.
So we'll do January to December then?
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, their request, I think, was to be intended for next year anyway, so-
Okay, alright, so we'll start at January for all twenty-
Just do calendar year.
All of twenty-five, and then we'll reassess next budget year what we're gonna do the following year.
Well, it'll be helpful within the budget, knowing that this is looming.
Right.
Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor from May. I don't believe, no, the statute doesn't state, you know, what type of mechanism that you have with regards to an agreement with the, with who you're donating to. A letter agreement may be enough, or just a letter from the city manager may be enough, sanctuary is what we're doing. Perhaps maybe a- Perhaps maybe a motion to, you know, approve the city manager entering into an agreement with the Gillespie Center would be enough, and then he can work behind the scenes, put that together, or we can. And I'm just thinking it'd be a letter agreement.
Okay, perfect.
Or just even a one-sided letter saying, here's what we're doing.
This is what we're doing, it's 500 a month.
Yeah, but this is a motion to authorize the manager to, you know, to work towards that with regards to, what's it, $500 a month? And plus, you can have the other parts in it, too, that the non-monetary aspects...
Whatever legal stuff you got to put in there.
Well, but the non-monetary was like the website, the, you know, the newsletter, those kind of things. But some, so, I guess if you're okay with it, I'll just say the motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. Maybe a motion to approve, let me get to the statute, motion to approve appropriation of money to support the Gillespie Center under Minnesota Statute, section 471.935, at a rate of $500 per month for a one-year, starting January 1st. In addition to, also to provide non-monetary support through the website and other, other means, and with an authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement.
Okay, so I'll make that my motion.
We got that, I know it's wordy.
Well, we can replay it.
Yeah.
All right, so we got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes, thank you for making that, for helping me make my motion. Okay, so now we're on to be approve resolution approving the 2025 preliminary general fund budget.
All right, Mayor and Council, in front of you in your packet is a lot more detailed information than I'm going to present. So if you have any questions at the end of the presentation, let me know. So, I prepared a PowerPoint that'll just kind of summarize what, kind of the process and recommendation. So, budget timeline, we're at the meeting tonight to review the preliminary levy and budget for 2025, and to adopt the preliminary levy and budget. It is due to the county by September 30th. We will also be doing the HRA preliminary approval as well, that is part of the agenda. And then after tonight, we will be doing a little bit more review on the budget. And then we will then do our truth and taxation presentation on December 10th, and then approval of the final levy and budget at the same meeting. And then that final levy is due to the county by December 27th. So as you know, the last year, we've been, we did, the city did a lot of work completing a long-term financial and capital plan that also included a utility rate study for water and sewer. So the preliminary budget is based on these plans. And then I just went into an explanation about why long-term financial planning is important. I won't go into too much detail, but it relates to strategic planning and developing policies, capital planning and budgeting. So it really allows us to project our revenues and expenditures and key factors that have a financial impact on the city. Little review of the general fund, this covers operating division of the city's basic services. So this is things like police, fire, street, parks, planning, zoning, and other city administration. This is funded primarily by taxes, licenses and permits, intergovernmental aid, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and other, and other in our cases, franchise fees. So, one thing I want to point out from last year, we did see some significant revenue changes. City of Mound is losing its local government aid. So if you look in that corner, that you can see, starting in 2020, we were getting 400, about 400,000. We have now, over the past six years, we do not get any of that anymore. And that is due to changes in how that is allocated. So that's pretty significant for us to, to decrease that amount each year. Actually, you can go back, sorry.
Why are we losing that?
So, that was, I believe, re-discussed at the state legislature, and per the guidelines that they redra, how they redrafted, how the allocation was...
The calculation?
Yeah, the calculation, for some reason, that new calculation bumped us out, and didn't, we didn't qualify as per their algorithm anymore.
But it was nothing we did?
It was nothing we did, it was just something that...
A change in their math?
Yep, yep, and so...
Since we're talking about that real quick, I've talked to our two, you know, state senator and representative, and I don't know if that's going to change anytime soon, like for next year, the year after, but we're advocating for us to try to get at least something back, because it's funny, you look at the list of who does get the LGA, and then you go, why do they get it? It doesn't make sense in my brain, but I know it's a calculation. Anyway, but yeah, we don't get any more.
And then also, last year, we did receive a one-time public safety grant, and that was about 412,000. And so you can see, for intergovernmental, we go down about 94%.
That's 6%, right, of the total? If you go back one, that's 6% of the 2024 baseline levy, of those two numbers, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're losing 6.2%. Well, we got a one-time 411, so it's a little misleading, but...
The 6.26?
Yeah.
That's what we're losing?
Well, because we got the 411, that was a one-time deal last year.
Right.
But, you know, we're losing 1% from last year of LGA. If you go back a couple of years, I mean, we're really losing 4, 5%.
And I think we budgeted going forward, like, part of the long-term financial plan was that there isn't any LGA.
Yeah, we don't, we're not...
If there's any in the future, that'll be a bonus, a positive.
Or any other public safety grants, or, you know, okay, sorry, May.
Oh, that's okay. And then I just wanted to show you a picture of, of, you know, losing that LGA, how that kind of re-structures our funding sources. Uh, yep, intergovernmental.
Yeah.
So that previously was about 7%. Well, that was in 2024, made up 20, about 7%, and so then that goes down to a little under 1% for this year. Expenditure changes, so we will have a non-election year next year. And then also, as we talked about earlier this year, the assessor fees that were, will now be covered by Hennepin County. So that is a big savings in that category. So we were, in 2024, we were at 142,000. And then now that the county has taken that on, we do not pay, we will not be paying that anymore. And then, uh, we'll go, I'll go through this during our truth and taxation. We reviewed this last year, so, again, property taxes are driven a lot by, or primarily by our operating expenditures, capital investments, and reserves and debt payments. Again, money, operations, so money for annual operating costs, capital, that's money put aside, so we're planning ahead and being preventative, doing preventative things like maintenance. And then debt is our money borrowed and owed on, on projects. And then I just kind of show a diagram of how the general fund, a portion of the general fund, again, is funded by the tax levy and how that's calculated. Again, you take your total expenditures, take what you project your, all non-property tax revenues will be, and then you get your tax levy.
Really great charts, again, very easy to read and understand. So thank you for whoever's doing the visuals, great job.
And then capital investments and planning, so that, again, is our strategic planning and financial capacity. So we did a really big review with our long-term financial and capital plan to set the next 10 years. These are funded by, entirely by the tax levy, and again, long way, if you look at those plans, it'll be more in detail, but that's for our parks, streets, buildings, and vehicles. This is our schedule for capital investments and planning that were outlined in our plans. So again, the green and the red are, are the fund, the capital expenditure items that will be impacted by our tax levy. And then water and sewer, that'll be a part of our rate, our water and utility rate structure. Debt payments, so debt payments within the schedule are paid entirely through tax levy. And so we do, as you can see, we do have, from 2024 to 2025, we do have debt falling off. But we have, we have some of that going back into our capital for reserves, again, to... So what we're trying to do is we're trying to save up for some of those capital expenditures, so that we're relying less on debt in the future. So this is our, again, our schedule, kind of lines up with general operation, how we fund our different categories and where those numbers come from. And then just for informational purposes, so one thing to note is that we're, for the home value exercise, we're assuming that tax capacity is flat. Right now, our tax capacity rate is actually negatives 1 this year. So this is very different from the last few years. We saw record increases in the last few years, and so this year, it is actually projecting to be negative 1.
I think that was a big factor in the LGA change, too, wasn't it?
For the last couple of years, yeah.
Yeah, I think that property values were, were a part of that calculation. And then the last slide, again, this just shows notable information considerations. Again, significant tax capacity reduction compared to other years, loss of local government aid, debt falling off. And then, again, that, our goal of building capital reserves to rely less on debt issuances in the future. So with that, I'm going to wait on questions. So I just want to make sure to, in your packet, I do have a, kind of a memo of what we're, a memo before the budget packet, for, so if you have any questions on that. Otherwise, I think I did have one more slide, Jesse, sorry, or maybe, so again, last slide, I can do it. City councils is being asked, again, to adopt a preliminary general fund budget and levy by approving a resolution that reflects the 2025 preliminary budget. So this would be, again, the dollar amount for the general fund, capital reserves, and special levies. And so that's reflected here, and again, that, those are the numbers that we talked about in, in our, in the presentation. I felt like there was one other thing I was going to say. Again, more detail in your packet. So with that, staff, the finance committee did recommend approval at, I guess I didn't go into that, too. I don't know if I mentioned it on one of the slides, but we do have a recommendation at 6%. So again, that's reflecting our long-term plan. The preliminary levy tonight, once you set it, you cannot go above what you approve, you can only lower it. And so in the next few months, we do, we'll probably have more information coming in, because we do have some final contracts still coming in between the next couple of months. And so that'll be a discussion point, I guess, in the next few months, when we get to our final meeting in December. So with that, that's what the levy, preliminary levy would reflect a 6% dollar levy increase, and that is reflected in the resolution in front of you today.
Okay, and just to clarify, the 6 is the top level that we set, it's actually 501?
I think it's 5.02, or like 5.2.
So, we gave ourselves a little wiggle room, just in case some of the contracts and insurance and stuff come in the next quarter that, you know, we can't go higher. So, really, if this was December, we'd say 502 and we're done with it, but we say it's 6. Remember last year, we did like 15 of them?
Yeah, so if everything comes in, as we're hoping, we could still do 5.2?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll look at, now, hypothetically, if we all agree that, you know, 6 is the number, I mean, 502 pays the bills and stays on the plan, that extra .98 would go into the general fund, you know, if we wanted to do that. Do I have to do an open public meeting right now?
Nope, just the resolution.
Okay. So this is where it says B on 2401, right?
Yep.
Okay, well, I guess, does Council have any more questions for Maggie?
I don't have any questions, no.
Okay.
Great job putting it together.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if, again, if any...
To all of you who have worked on it.
So, a comment on that, I mean, we did, we had a handful of meetings. The last one, you know, we did go, just like we did last year, we went, I mean, line item by line item with, well, it was all of us. Jesse, Noah, Maggie, the two of us. And, you know, we don't take it lightly of what we're doing, you know, taxes aren't fun. When you look at, you know, our water bill and the whole, our, is it storm that's in the?
Storm and sewer.
Storm, I mean, we got issues that we need to kind of get out of, that's why we did the long-term financial plan last year. We're trying to keep it reasonable, like last year was kind of the get out of the, get out of the mess we're in kind of year. But then now it should be a little bit more even keel, hopefully along the way, so. I feel pretty good about it, I've heard other cities and around us that are higher. I don't, I'm not prepared to quote exactly, but is it Hennepin County, what are we, in Hennepin County? Is it 6 or 8?
As far as our ranking?
Well, I just saw it on the news the other day. Well, I got an email from our commissioner, too.
We do, we do pretty good, I mean, compared to some of our neighbors, but just got to remember that we're all different.
Yeah, we're all different, yeah.
Yep.
We're trying to soften our...
But we've been, we've had a lot to dig out of, so this has not been pleasant for any of us this year, for our residents. But, you know, at some point, we're going to see light at the end of the tunnel, so it's all good news in the end.
Yeah. Okay, so if there's no other questions, 2401, if someone wants to make a resolution?
I can, and I guess I didn't have any questions, but I did want to add the comment that we did. I mean, Maggie and Jesse were able to answer every question, they got a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, kind of going over everything, and there was no wild swing in any departments, you know, it was a lot less discussion and surprises just because we kind of just opted to stick with the plan. So, I mean, it was less eventful, in a good way.
And that was the last meeting?
Yeah, like Councilmember McEnany said, we're, you know, going to see the light of day, and we're, every year, we get closer to making a big difference every year, so...
And then I'll also add Noah, of course.
Noah, sorry.
Yeah, for sure.
He's in the dark, I can't see him.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it 2401 or 2405?
2401.
Oh, there's two of them, okay, so if someone wants to do that?
I can do that, but I'm going to add in the 6% just for clarification, too, because that's kind of a relatable part of it, in my opinion. I'd like to make a resolution approving the 2025 preliminary general fund budget in the amount of $6,6,914,382, and setting the preliminary levy at $8,208,694, which would be a 6% increase over prior year.
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, that passes. Okay, so now we're going to adjourn the city council meeting, and we're going to open the Mound Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting. So I'm going to close...
It should do by motion.
Oh, sorry, you guys got to approve that. Can I get a motion to close the council meeting?
So moved.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, those opposed? All right, so we're closed. And now I'm going to open the 2024 Mound Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting. And are you going to say anything on this, Maggie?
Yeah, so, um, sorry. So, a little different than last year, usually we do this before the council meeting, but with the meeting change, we are actually doing this approach, where we're doing it during the city council meeting. So, Housing and Redevelopment Authority in the city of Mound, just a reminder, exists to suppo- So, uh, Housing and Redevelopment Authority in the city of Mound, just a reminder, exists to support redevelopment activity within the city. Uh, so the state statute, uh, specifically allows the city to do a special tax that could be levied uh, in an amount not to exceed point one eight five of the city's taxable market value. Uh, and so this is a separate levy, uh, and what this levy does and has done historically is it pays off a debt service on the transit center bond, so that's the two thousand fifteen B tax abatement bond, and then it also goes towards operating and capital expenses for the Harvard District and the HRA. So, the city has historically kept the levy at two hundred and fifty thousand. The, if you calculate the point zero one eight five, it's about, I think, four hundred and sixteen thousand, um, so we are staying underneath that. So we're just getting enough to cover our, what we need to cover. And so with that, staff is recommending that the HRA board approve the attached resolution authorizing the levy of this, uh, special benefit levy that is allowed to us under state statute, again, for, to cover that debt service payment and for operating and capital expenses within that fund.
Say, I think we jumped the gun here on, uh, we need to approve the agenda first, and then get to prove the minutes on this from the previous one a year ago, and then, uh,
Oh my gosh, okay, sorry. We usually do this before our council meeting, but we changed our meeting time to six o'clock, and you can't do it at six for some reason, so, anyway, uh, okay, so we, we already opened the meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Is there any amendments, by the way?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Alright, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? You say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Number three.
So that's approved, okay, and then, sorry, now you moved on.
Now we have minutes.
Okay, now we have, what is this?
We had to approve the minutes first.
The minutes from last year?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-third, sorry, twenty twenty-three meeting?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from previous year's HRA meeting.
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that passes. Maggie already did her part, and then I think unless there's any other questions, we're ready to do our motion for this year.
I would like some quick clarification, and I, I think I asked this last year too, but regarding, um, the Harbor District and Locks, Lost Lake slip expenses, are we getting no other support anywhere else? We're paying for all those slips, just we pay it, there's, there's no other support coming from rent or?
I think we do get
The rent in.
Yeah.
They are, yeah.
So the amount is?
No, I might have it come up.
Oh, sorry.
It's fund two eighty-five. And it's eighty-five thousand dollars.
So we get eighty-five thousand dollars in rent, and then we put the rest of the bill for maintenance and?
So that is actually, we're actually building fund balance. So, our total expense in that fund is about about eighty-five thousand dollars, so we do with the property tax, but that fund covers the slips, but it also covers like the, the maintenance of the pier, the board rock, the actual transit district itself, the parking lot, so what's, there's more things than just the Lost Lake slips.
And, and there's, have we ever raised the rental fees or anything, so we are?
Did a couple of years ago, I can get you the math on that.
Well, it would be nice to look at, because this is a pretty huge expense, so it would be nice to look at if there's anywhere we could find to cut the expenses.
Okay.
Can you get back to us on that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll look through the agreement with the association itself.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I've never seen
Remember, it's not just the Lost Lake
No, I understand.
And that's a part of that fund
Uh huh.
That covers, so that's to cover the debt for the transit district itself, which Maggie spoke apart, and also the maintenance itself.
So the transit part with all the re-blocking that we're doing, is that, does that money all come out of this fund?
So
To redo like the parking lot and stuff?
No, that, this will cover routine maintenance, not necessarily capital, can't afford to do that, and it wasn't its intention either.
Okay. Well, I think it would be interesting to look at it and just see if there's anything that could be shaved.
Okay.
Thank you.
The bonds we have to do as well, yeah, so that'll be, we should approve the levy at the HRA level.
Yep.
Let's do that first, then we'll do the bonds, and then we can do it at the city for the HRA.
Alright. Okay.
Alright, so we, are we on two? No.
We're on four. Uh, so, um, so this would be action on resolution authorizing the levy of special benefit, uh,
For the HRA?
Yep.
Okay.
In the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Someone wanna make that resolution? It's twenty four oh five, right?
Okay, yeah, I can do that, I just wanna make sure that's the right one.
It's the, uh,
It's actually
Page four.
Yeah, it's a separate packet within the packet, so I would, should be right there, but I would just use the
Okay, uh, well, if I'm reading the same thing, I mean, I'm on twenty four oh five, is that the same thing?
No.
No.
Okay, I can't.
It's on page four of the
Oh, well, okay, let me just, uh, get there, and I think we have, we should clarify too, that it's not, it's just kind of keeping the fund level status quo from last year, there's no changes. Yeah, I'm just gonna struggle to read that up there. I need to get new glasses.
Here, do you want, do you want, here, I'll read it.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
But, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the, uh, well, of the, uh, of the HRA, because we have a resolution number up there, so I would suggest that it should be a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash zero one H, and then you can read the resolution.
Right.
Okay.
And I can help you on it.
Okay, um, asking for a motion to approve Housing and Redevelopment Authority in and for the city of Mound, resolution number twenty-four dash oh one H, authorizing the levy, a special benefit levy pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section four six nine zero three three subdivision six, and approval of budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Alright, that passes. Okay, so are we going back to the city council, or do you want to do the bonds?
We'll, we'll have one more resolution here.
Okay, is that twenty four oh five?
No, that's still within
Page six.
It's, it's page, uh, page six
Okay, please.
In the HRA package.
Okay, so this right here?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't.
You can't read it, can you?
I got it right here.
Can you?
Finally, Connor.
Okay.
And it'll be the same, cause there's a number up there, just motion to approve resolution number block.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two four dash zero two H, uh, resolution authorizing the partial call of certain outstanding bonds.
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Alright, that passes. Okay, now we're going back to the city council.
So a motion to adjourn?
Right.
Yep.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
We can.
Oh.
Oh, you did it, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry, Noah.
Okay, alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any, just, anybody wanna talk about it? No? All, and those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Alright, we're adjourned on the HRA, and
Now we reconvened at the city council meeting.
Yep, I'm gonna reconvene in the city council meeting. Now, so we are reconvened on our city council meeting. Uh, we just went through our HRA, and now we are going to approve our resolution, which is E in the packet. Uh, it's on page two four oh five.
And this is the resolution at the city council level that was just approved by the HRA.
Got it.
Yep.
Alright.
I can make a resolution, uh, on page two four oh five, approving a levy not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of defraying the cost of operation pursuant to the provisions of MSA four six nine of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of and for the city of Mound for two thousand twenty-five.
Alright, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Alright, that passes. Thank you. Alright, so now, we are gonna, well, we're gonna talk about two three nine six Commerce Boulevard update, and I need to get a motion to go into a closed meeting, this is
And before you do, I'll, I'll read, I'm gonna read
Yeah.
Something into the record. The city council will be convening to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three under the attorney-client privilege. The matter involves active litigation entitled in the matter of the hazardous buildings located at twenty-three ninety-six Commerce Boulevard, um, mound, Minnesota, Hennepin County, court file number twenty-seven dash C V twenty-three four seven nine five. The city council requires the item be closed to allow for a candid and open discussion about litigation issues, including defense and possible areas of reconciliation. Nothing is present, or, nothing is presently pending before the city council regarding the decision, discussing the matter in an open session would be detrimental, because it would take place in front of potential litigants, um, and a closed session would benefit the public, because any financial liability would be taxpayer-funded. And with that, I'm, uh, staff and myself are looking for a motion from the city council to, uh, go into closed session.
Okay, so unless you have discussion on that, I'm gonna say, can I get a motion to go into a closed session?
I would like to make a motion to go into a closed session.
Okay, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Alright, we're in a closed session. Alright, so
Coming back, coming out of the closed session.
We're coming out of the closed session now. And, do you wanna say it, or do you want me to say it?
Sure, I, I can say it. So, um, again, we just came, we're coming out of a closed session with regards to the property located at twenty-three ninety-six Commerce Boulevard, which is subject to a, to a hazardous condition. The city council, um, in the closed session, discussed a settlement agreement. What I'm looking for is a motion to amend the agenda to add the res- the resolution that approves the settlement agreement.
Okay.
And then, I'm supposed to do that first.
Alright, so can I get a motion to amend the agenda to include this resolution?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include, um, this resolution.
We can say resolution approving the settlement agreement for twenty-three ninety-six Commerce.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution approving, uh, settlement agreement in the matter of hazardous building located at twenty-three ninety-six Commerce.
That's good.
Alright, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Alright, so that's on our agenda, now we're gonna talk about it, and
And I, and I can just, uh, chime in a little bit here with regards to it, let me, I'll pull it up here. So, a- a- as provided, as stated, um, previously, this property was subject to, is subject to a hazardous building action. As our building inspector has determined that the hazardous conditions have been, um, addressed, and so through discussions, mediation discussions with the property owner, the settlement, the settlement agreement that's attached, that is exhibit A, to the resolution is provided to the city council for consideration, and the recommendation from myself and city staff would be that a motion is made to approve, um, the resolution that is presented.
Got it, alright, so unless there's any discussion, if someone wants to make that motion.
I make a motion for the city of Mound to approve the resolution settlement agreement in the matter of the hazardous building located at twenty-three ninety-six Commerce Boulevard, mound, uh, court file number twenty-seven dash C V dash twenty-three dash four seven nine, and it's resolution number twenty-four.
Alright.
To be determined.
Oh, to be determined.
Alright, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, that passes. Alright, so now we are going to number eleven, comments and reports from council members. Uh, let's see, council member McAnany?
None.
Council member Casalano?
No. Not, not much, I just wonder, so, this, I just like wanna see what you guys think about this too, but just a quick question, and I know we have Rave, we have Facebook, we have the website, but, um, I still see a lot of people complaining about that they didn't know that there was water stuff going on.
It was so awful.
Could we entertain doing like, uh, cause you can do like a mailer, like, direct, you can drill down, you know, to the street and everything, like, would it be wise or cost-effective of us to send out like the cheapest little, you know, black and white postcard to say like, uh, next week you are gonna have, you know, it's like
At some point, we have to put the responsibility on the resident.
I agree.
We've given them social media, we have what, six hundred and seventy? This is ridiculous.
So, can I say one thing?
It's an apathetic, um, group, very often.
So, this one, the alert did not go out as planned. So, I got the alert, a lot of people I know got the alert, some people didn't get the alert, do we know what happened with the alert?
I mean, there's always gonna be someone that doesn't know.
I'd like to also say, reading Nextdoor and the, the complaint club, most people don't even, there's so many people that aren't even on Rave, I kept putting down the link, you know, for, and they're like, wow, really? Didn't know that. And this has been in every newsletter, even before you were
You know, a lot of people will comment on, um, on these too, and say like, well, didn't you get the the text, or didn't you get the alert, didn't you get X, Y, or Z, and it's always someone who doesn't get it, but I'm just wondering if that's something that's like not very expensive, or if it is, it's like, there's still always gonna be someone who'd be like, oh, I didn't read my mail.
At some point, I think we have to put the responsibility on the homeowner.
I agree.
We can't keep footing the bill for, for their lack of interest in trying to find ways to communicate with the city, we've given them, it's in every newsletter, it's on our website.
So I, I, again, with this one, do we know how many people didn't get it this time? There was an accident, right?
And, uh, yeah, I think it
What happened?
I think it went out later than it was intended. Um, it was still prior to work being done. That said, for water-related things, I mean, you might as well go to everybody at this point, because even if you're on the other side of the city from where work is being done, just, you're not really gonna know, so maybe a broader approach could just be, you know, it's water-related, just tell everybody, I mean, part of it is too, you don't wanna alarm people and then have everybody
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I will say, not to defend this particular one, but I will say Ryan said he talked to probably six or seven people today, and I don't think any of them were on Rave, so he was getting them signed up in real time.
Right.
I talked to someone who found out because their neighbor had it, and then texted the group chat, and, um, when we were talking, I was saying, cause what Ryan was hearing, what I didn't, like, what I think people don't realize is that this isn't an app that's gonna be blowing up your phone all the time, like when you download one, because of, you know, McDonald's makes you do it to order a cheeseburger. And so this particular person was like, oh, that makes me feel way better, because they, she was worried that our phone was never gonna stop telling her things about Mound. So, so, you know, more people may have heard about it otherwise, maybe, you know, if we just keep getting the message out there, but then, obviously, too, we can always do better, just as, as far as
Well, I don't know, I mean, I, I agree with council member McAnany too, it's like at some point, you know, people will complain that their water looks like that, but also haven't mentioned the fact that the plumbing is over a hundred years old, and, you know, it's like their water looks like that, but also haven't mentioned the fact that the plumbing is over a hundred years old, and, you know, it's like, so you gotta put it on them.
It's one of those issues that's never going to go away until we have a filtration. You know, and we do have all the old pipes, we've been working on this, and the...
So we do post about it on, on social media, it's everywhere that it needs to be?
Well, so one, so...
It should have been on Facebook and Instagram, but we didn't get it on, I didn't see it on there today.
No, I, you know, and it was, I, I know we were sent, and we just need to sit down too, as staff, and just figure out too, like, I think the message that went out on Rave was site-specific, and so then I was like, you know, I think we need to talk about more, like, when do we put it to everybody, or when do we just do a sites, site, like an area? And, so, hopefully we can get that figured out, and then also too, I think this has been a big year with communications, and then also with our new website. Hopefully, you know, hopefully that being done by end of December, iCloud being active will have, you know, more communication there.
I thought about that too, in your presentation.
There is gonna be a e-notify, you know, on this, so every resident can go through and choose everything they want to understand.
I thought about that when the iCloud thing could tie in updates like that, so...
Yeah, so there are other things coming about, but, so hopefully that'll add some more communication options. But again, I agree, no matter what message you get out and, and on what platform, there will always be somebody that misses it, but again, educating people that we are trying, and we're getting there, and we're adding more, and I think it's, you know, we're just trying to work out the kinks a little bit here.
And, and with that being said, Maggie, you've done an amazing job, going from literally nothing to getting the word out, so I know we thank you in the past, but thank you for doing it, because you have a lot of, you know, balls in the air.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's going really well, and I like to do it, and I know, but I always, I know too that there's always areas to improve, so...
Well, I feel like we're doing, you know, more than we have to, and we're definitely doing more than we used to, but I was just wondering if there's any other, you know, areas or ways to do it, but that was my short story.
Train our residents, that we are here for them with all the news they need to see, and put the ownership on them. It's a pretty apathetic group of residents.
Well, I know, and a lot of them don't even, you know, they're not even living here, and it's just...
Yeah.
So we, we sent it out to this many people, but this, this many people got affected. That's kind of what happened? You zone-texted people?
I, and I don't know the zone that was texted, but it was, I believe, more specific to the area near the water tower. So what it was, was it was routine maintenance of the water tower, it was draining, and then they do a bacteria test and send it in, and they'll refill it. The plan is to refill it Thursday, and what happens when you have to drain a tower is you have to reverse how the water's moving through the pipes, so what's in the tower can come out, what's in the pipes, you know, it settles going one way, it comes back the other, and we've got iron pipes, so it's...
See, I think that information right there is so interesting, and so many people enjoy all of the posts that has to do with the, the city, the public works. And, you know, we should put that out on, on a day following this, or two days after, and say, you know, here, you know, it's kind of like, how, how does a chicken lay an egg? People need to understand the process. And I think it would be really helpful to include that information somewhere, whether you direct people to go to the website, or you post something on social media, but it's, it's really interesting, and I think the more people understand, they have a, they're a little more understanding of, oh, this mound isn't just trying to torture us with brown water.
We're not the only ones doing this, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody has to do that same process with their water towers, and then as we...
But, you know, it's interesting, stuff to know about.
As we begin to filter the water and a future plant and things, and you start to eliminate some of the reasons why water does, you know, things, and it, but it'll always happen, that's why we always, every city flushes their fire hydrants regularly, because water settles, so...
So can we, who wrote this alert?
I don't know if Andy wrote it, they would have come out from City Hall, but it could have been written by Public Works.
So I think it needs to be changed. This, this is the alert that I got in mind, it says, mound alert, water tower maintenance is occurring this week, you may experience intermittent water discoloration this week. We apologize for the inconvenience. That's good, but is there a way that we can go a little more into depth on?
Where?
Where, exactly, and hey, don't wash your clothes.
I got the same one.
You know, they say use whatever that chemical is on your clothes, so you don't wash your clothes. People are like washing their clothes, and now they're, now they're ruined. Now, again, if we sent that out, that's fine, but did we send it out to enough people? We, we have a, we're only two point two square miles, so if something happens over here, it might...
Two point eight. Exactly.
Okay.
You know, this went out, it was supposed to go out Friday, I think you said? So if people would have had a heads up, they would have gone, oh, okay, don't do laundry on, on Monday, or what day is it today? Tuesday. So, I agree, better information, and make sure that we're getting it out, you know, in advance, other than the morning of.
I was thinking too, I mean, that's a lot to maybe put in a text, but maybe we could add a link or something in, just say, you know...
Because you can reuse it, you know?
Yeah, something just to, because that information isn't gonna change necessarily, if we have routine things that we do.
But you know, I didn't know it was water tower, and I didn't know it just went out to a handful of people.
So that's a problem, so like people in our area got it.
Right.
But people maybe over here didn't.
Was it the Sorbo Water Tower that they were working on, or?
Yeah, that would have been the one, yeah.
Yeah.
It's over here, yeah.
Yeah, this, yeah, Sorbo, yeah.
Okay.
Well, two...
Or, I mean, it could have been this one, or Chateau too, it might still affect us.
I think it was ours, because that's the people that I heard got it. But again, I know like downward, Councilmember Larson lives, right, that's where the, where the two flushed together.
Come together.
So if any bit got through there, and then, you know, you know, our system is big, but it's not that big. So maybe more people know, hey, there's water tower maintenance, we only have two.
People love to bitch, I mean, again, i- i- if our water was clean and bright and delicious to drink, what would the Complaint Club do? They would have nothing to complain about.
They'd find something, but anyway, that's all I have.
Yeah, I would just say, if you could, if we can try to alert a few days ahead of time, and maybe even do another one, or, you know, whatever, just as long as, I got it at nine twenty-four AM yesterday.
I did too.
And, I think, for me, I think it was fine, I didn't have a problem, but my wife, I was at work, and she texts me, and she's like brushing her teeth, and she's... But again, remember, this is the flushing, this is normal, this isn't that we have bad water all of a sudden, this is a normal flushing thing that we do.
But, but people don't understand.
Right.
But, you know, I got a phone call, text, and, you know, whatever you sign up for, and I got them all, so...
Yeah, yeah, it worked.
But, you know, when I texted Maggie the other day on something completely unrelated, when you said it was supposed to go out Friday, that made a lot of sense, because then people would have had a better understanding of, you know, we might be doomed if you throw in a white load on Monday.
And again, I think it's, you know, working out some of those things when somebody is out at the office, who's the backup? And, you know, again, we, there's, there's always improvements to be made, so sometimes, unfortunately, this has to happen for us to have better awareness, I guess, so...
Okay, and that's all you had?
That's it.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick things. So on the, I already talked, kind of talked about this a little bit. I was not gonna open. Did you guys get the Hennepin County press release?
The twenty-fifty thing?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Or the twenty-twenty-five?
Oh.
Come on.
Did you get the information about the twenty-fifty?
Uh, that's Matt Council thing?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I didn't, I kind of forwarded to him to see if there's anything...
It's atrocious.
Okay.
So, we have till October fifth to, you know, as a resident or whatever, make comments.
Okay.
Which I've already done, it was about a five-page long.
Okay. So Hennepin County Board passes five point five percent maximum property tax for twenty-twenty-five. So again, you know, we just talked about our lobby. So anyway, you can go out there and look at it, it's Hennepin County, but I just wanted to say that since we're in Hennepin County. Let's see, and then the library, there's not a lot of verbiage on why, but they're delaying it a little bit. Jesse, do you know any of the details, or know as much as I do?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
They're delaying the start and everything, or just...
Yeah, it's like into next year now.
We had kind of expected it to be, at least in the, into the spring, as we've kind of talked about, a possibility for temp library and stuff, we were always targeting like February, so that's, that's if they had tore everything down already then, so...
So it just says the timeline for this project has been adjusted slightly, and the building will now remain open until into early twenty-twenty-five, whatever that means. But that's it, there's not really a lot of updates beyond that, so hopefully we'll get more to come on exactly how early into twenty-twenty-five. And then you're working on the, the other stuff, when they're, when they're down. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
That's, oh, I just saw that, that they're working on the sidewalks tonight, or, you know, on the way here. Uh, so that's good, that's the last, well, the one section right by, anytime, they were doing that section right now, so that's cool, looking for that. And the tar looks amazing.
Yeah, it does.
It's awesome.
That was a good decision not to do brick.
Yeah.
So, thank you. And then we see the new park, man, they got a big hole there. I don't know what they're doing, but...
Where?
The new...
Green space.
The new green space, the lot there.
Oh, yeah, that pavement is awesome.
So, okay, well, if there's anything else, no?
I will just mention, there's an open house at the Fire Department next Wednesday, six to eight PM.
Oh.
Bring your family.
Six to eight?
I didn't read there, are they having hot dogs or anything?
I just closed it, I, I think there's activities and things, and I'll just pull it back up.
I knew they do like cookies and coffee and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the Facebook page, but I...
Be fire prevention, but, yeah. Uh, let's see, Sparky the Fire Dog's gonna be there, beverages and snacks, yeah, so...
Okay, good.
Stuff's always fun.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Is that it?
Yes.
Alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.